I'd like to call the meeting to order as clerk pro ten. I'd like to begin with congratulating our three new board members. We'll start with Catherine Zarnegi.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge according to the best of my ability the duties of the position of Member of Board of Education, Spencer Port Central School District.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chibardo. Congratulations.
Thank you. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York. That I will faithfully discharge according to the best of my ability the duties of position of Member of Board of Education, Spencer Port Central School District.
Congratulations. Ms. Laurie Stone?
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge according to the best of my ability the duties of the position of Member of Board of Education, Spencer Port Central School District.
Congratulations. All right, at this time, I'd like to take nominations for the position of President.
I'd like to nominate.
Any other nomination for anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Hutton? Eight, seven, any again? Zero. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. So we do have one. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge and accordingly to the best of my abilities the duties of the position of President, Board of Education, Spencer Port School District. So, the meeting is back this way now, right? Okay. So, we need to call for nominations for the Vice President of our school board.
I'd like to nominate Ethel Logan there.
Rick Wood?
Mr. Kincaid.
Second. No, you won't.
Second Kate. Any other nominations? All in favor of Mr. Kincaid? As Vice President of the School Board, seven, zero.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge according to the best of my ability the duties of the position of Vice President, Board of Education, Spencer Port Central School District.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
One other oath that we do not need a vote for is the oath of the Office of the Superintendent of Schools.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge according to the best of my ability the duties of the position of Superintendent of Schools, Spencer Port Central School District.
This is your chance to run.
Marcy, do you want our things here?
So I would like at this time to share, just got a text. For all those attending via Zoom, we have all social distances. It may not look in the camera, but we are all six feet apart and thank you for your concern. Okay, so first item on new business is appointments. So, we all had a chance to review everything on the news and notes over the past weekend. Is there any questions on those appointed? These were all nearly identical to next year or last year. Any questions? Gary, second. All in favor? Seven, zero. With that, we just appointed Marcy Klepper as Board of Education Clerk. Therefore, it's time for you to...
Okay, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge according to the best of my ability the duties of the position of District Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is Board Appointments, which is our legal firms, our auditing firms, our consultants. Again, and Audit Committee. So again, they're pretty similar to last year. Are there any questions?
We have a TBD.
One to be determined on the Audit Committee.
So this is a chance, I've served on the Audit Committee for six years. If there's anyone that wants to do it, I'll step aside, but I'll keep doing it gladly.
So we'll get to that when we get to...
I bet the TBD was our medical director.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, there was TBD.
Oh, for memberships. Okay, so we need one more person.
Okay, so yes, the other to be determined was on our Audit Committee, but also our Medical Director because of the changes that we've been talking about with having it and... Okay.
Motion to approve the external appointments.
Second, Mr. Kincaid, all in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you all. Board designations, designated would be mostly internal people in the jobs that they have to do as part of their responsibilities, but also as assigned by the Board of Education. Any person of motion?
Motion to approve the internal designations.
Gary, second. Greg, any discussion? All in favor? Seven, zero. Okay, external Board of Education designees, including banks and services that we utilize. Again, Maker.
Motion for the external designations.
Okay, second. So first, Mr. Bracken, second, Mr. Maselli. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, zero. So I thank everyone for spending the time over the weekend to review all of this, so it goes much smoother. Board of Education authorizations, including budget transfers and treasurer bonds and being participant in our cooperative bidding and purchasing through OSAs as well as... Yeah, you read them all. There's a long list on this one. So, motion for authorizations.
I do have a question. Did we want to discuss anything about New York State School Associations since it's part of this section? Or table it, take it out of here for now?
Yes, let's look. Yes, I would like, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the authorizations with the exception of including New York State School Boards Association at this time.
Okay, discussion about that is, we want to, before we sign onto this and approve this resolution, we want to make sure that the value is there for the Spencer Port School District with the New York State School Boards. So we will have that as an agenda item for our next meeting. So note that. Okay. So we have a second with the motion to remove that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seven, zero. Good catch, Gary, thank you. Okay, Board of Education Resolutions. These are items that are mandated that we resolve each year. I think we've gone, had a chance to go through this. So, motion for approval of Board of Education Resolutions. Mr. Kincaid, second, Mr. Maselli, all in favor? Seven, zero. Okay, now we get to have some conversation here. So our next items are the Board of Education Representatives to Committees. So Item 3A, put my name in for that as Board of Education President. That is the Monroe County School Board Executive Committees or Executive Committee. Labor Relations. So as we shared with Lori that we, some of us have committees that we've been on for a long time, but I think everyone would be open to new people joining on it. So if there's, Lori, I don't want to just say you've got first choice, but we want to afford you the opportunity to do things that best fit you or where you think it'll help you to grow as a board member. So first, on the list is Labor Relations. Unfortunately, I don't have a copy of last year's. So who was?
The relations was myself and Gary, the Chair.
Gary and Mike for Labor.
Okay, are you, again, the Chair of?
Vice President of the Association, so you're not the Chair. But I will be going to all these, so you can probably put my name as an alternate for all these.
I'll take Labor Relations again. It was interesting. And to be fair, it got cut off.
Would you say what?
To be fair, it got cut off. It was once a month for...
So rather than taking up our alternate slot, is there anyone, because you will be there, is there anyone else that would want to be on the Labor Relations?
Those being offsite at wherever, right?
It's lunchtime on Wednesday.
There's a different one that I wanted to sign up for.
Okay.
That means at lunch on Wednesday, so I don't want to overcommit.
There'll be different Wednesdays, but because it's the same group. Okay, lunchtime's gonna be very... Okay, so.
Mike and Gary?
So that also holds true for the Legislative. So Lori, which one were you thinking?
I was interested in the information exchange one. But I could be persuaded to do the Legislative Committee if nothing else.
We have a lot of lines to fill here. So I would like to, I was active with the Legislative Committee, so I would be the member on that. Unless someone else wants to be the member and/or the alternate. And all of the Monroe County School Boards Association events, basically, they'd be happy if people showed up. So it's not like an alternate is either or, it can be both. So no one else wants the Legislative Committee, I will volunteers or a second person wants that? And we don't have to fill every one of these line items, but Gary's our alternate.
Where are they meeting now? It's no longer, I'll be in, right?
And it is, has been very timely, the meeting. So everyone over, you get there and you get out if you can get that hour lunch. A next item is the Information Exchange, so member would be Lori.
Is it okay, Kate, because you were on? Just eat it up. Anybody that can take daytime stuff, I'm grateful for.
Okay. Alternate for Information Exchange? Never been on it, but I hear it's a great...
They're trying to make it topical.
I'll take the alternate.
Okay, Annual Building Visitation. So if you remember, it's in our policy to call it building visitation, but as we've been doing in the past couple of years, you are the liaison for that building when you're volunteering for this. So Lori, we're gonna allow you to make the first selection.
Wow. I'm gonna choose one of the schools that my kids have, I just want to know which one I should take. Can I go to Cosgrove?
Lori for Cosgrove. So.
So if it's been 10-page reports, just to have...
The presentation, the 10-page report.
Only for Cosgrove. So Kate, what would you choose? And I'll be? I'm basing it on who groans the most is gonna make something. What would you like?
Well, they have to sit high.
Oh, glad, I meant to, I mean, if you want.
Jody took the bullet historically and did the administration building transportation because it seemed like no one else wanted it, so I will take that.
I did that last year.
Jody and Burdenby? I can go see Dave. There's Wilson, Canalview, and Cosgrove recovered, right?
I can do Burdenby, if you want high school, go ahead.
Leo.
What's that?
You said you wanted?
No, go ahead, it's fine. Oh, I mean, I do high school.
I'll take the administration transportation.
So Dave, high school? So that...
Check out the basement thing in this moment.
So we got Taylor again?
Yeah, I can go to Taylor again, anyone.
You will, so then we have one, Mon and Burdenby, so I will continue with my monster. Who is left? Gary.
Lori, wear your boots when you go to Cosgrove, we want me to go on the roof.
That's right. If you would keep going to that.
This is the high point of every one of our tours, it's going up on the roof.
It is.
Okay, begin everyone. Every location. Okay, and so Lori, what will happen is, facilities will reach out to you and say, hey, we're gonna be doing it soon, what time works for you?
So you're running for our September beginning, October, September, February.
So now...
You do the tour with Nelson, Nelson Drake.
Okay. Faculty Scholarship Committee.
I did this last year, but I have, fingers crossed, at least one of my children are applying this coming year.
I'll do that.
Okay, it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, it is.
Kate for Scholarship. I think we had the last year, two of the best Board Policy Committee members.
I love Board Policy.
You just like messing with me. I'll take it.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Lori down here now.
Yes, anytime. Health Advisory Committee.
I can do that.
Lori?
Anyone tell her that she's gotta take...
I didn't tell her, Marcia's actually writing her name on everything, no matter what we say. And then we'll sign it next year, or next week and approve those minutes. Okay, School to Career Advisory Committee. Objections? Okay, Technology Advisory Committee. Where's Jody?
That was Jody. Mike, does everyone down your path a little bit? Of course, you have a choice.
If no one else would like it, I will take it.
Okay. Schools, or Safe Schools Advisory Committee.
I'll stick with that. I know we had two people on that last year. Dave and I did it last year. There were two on there.
Because he's split the committee.
You want to do it again?
Yeah.
So two of us will do it. So it was the Board of Conduct was one committee.
Yeah, once they get involved, Nelson and Johnson, it's today and it'll be...
Okay, Advisory Council. It's twice per year. Ensures Spencer Port is meeting guidelines for new regulations and provide direction for future goals involving the school districts, the council, and the program.
Did Jody do that?
It wasn't memorable. We only get one in, is that the issue?
See, that one.
So, anybody?
Go ahead. No, please.
Lori, put her hand up, I'm taking it.
Yeah.
Okay, Dave?
What's that?
We signed up though?
I did.
Budget Focus Group, somebody say on that. So, Turner Member is...
Unlimited Membership. It happens automatically on that, correct? And then last year, we have two people.
It'd be good if you guys did.
Yeah, but what we do every year is Rick will encourage you to come anyhow if you want to. Because a lot of times it's a carryover into the board meeting. Presentation this year, obviously. So Greg and...
I always show up anyways.
Okay, so Professional Learning Committee, that was once the Professional Development?
Yes.
So again, even though there's one line here, it could be more than one person, so yes.
Kevin, you're doing it as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Audit Committee, the most exciting of committees.
I just like time with Rick, so I'll do it if no one else.
Gary and Mike? It was all three last year. Okay, Wellness Committee. Greg and Gary? Nature Center Committee.
I was on that last year, but it's very tough for me, and I don't know where it's at for it very good.
I think there's two people on that, I was on it, it kind of dazzled a little bit. I'll give it a run. We have two people on, we had two on it.
Yeah, you put my name down, it's fine.
Okay.
Well, we never had. No. You have to have it right before we close, that's right.
Okay, so item number four. Motion to adjourn, second organizational meeting, second, Mr. Kincaid. All in favor? Seven. So I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 14th meeting of the Spencer Port School Board to order. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation of our own, under the law of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? First, Mr. Bracken, second, Mr. Maselli, all in favor? Seven, oh, thank you all. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. You think we'll have kids back at some point where we have to describe what a consent agenda is? I hope so. Okay, approval for consent, or motion for consent agenda.
Nice job.
Made by Lori? So Lori, you have to say, make a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion.
Thank you. Put her on the spot, second, Mike, all favor? Seven, oh, thank you. Okay, Presidents, for Board of Education Reports. I, as the President, for the last 30 minutes, I don't have much to report. Except that I'm feeling comfortable here with our format of having the space between everyone. So there are two more people in our meeting. So for those that are attending, what we're doing here, it may not appear that way in the images, but we are all at least six feet away, that's why we're not wearing our face coverings. If anyone moves around about the room, we are wearing our face covering, so we are being safe. Any other Board of Education member reports?
Two quick things. You're coming up as the internal audit, the Audit Committee met last week, they go over that report and stuff and everything. That's pretty clear and cut and dry. It was approved, yeah, and so provided the Audit Committee. None of this stuff in there is really surprising, anything like that, it was all pretty clean. The second thing is the return to work, task force met last week. Breaking into our subcommittees this week. Operations meets tomorrow.
Instructional's meeting tomorrow as well, studying the three options.
So those things are ongoing and see where those things take us.
For those that might be online and everyone here, I sent out a few documents that have been coming from the State of New York, including a requirement that we submit a plan by July 31st. And this was the first where they actually said it was, we're submitting it for approval. If you're involved with any other business in New York State where we're required guidelines, it was simply a statement that says, I affirm that I will be following these guidelines, but with school districts, it must be submitted, reviewed, and approved. So the task force, the efforts that have been going on for the last couple of months, helped us towards it, but still, today, we don't have the full New York State Department of Education requirements. We have a New York State Department of Health guideline, but not the SEDs, which they're expecting it to come out tomorrow.
Well, portal will open Friday, which will give us, similarly what we did in the spring, we'll get details of what we have to include for the three different models. Ultimately, we're gonna have to grab a tape for one of those. So, but we finished up some questionnaires today that I think I and Jonathan will be sharing with their subcommittees tomorrow. But instructional and operational, and then it's two weeks of hard work and sort of comes out of it in terms of what we need to also put in place after that in terms of any MOAs, any considerations for... any MOAs, any considerations for how people are doing their jobs and what they're doing in professional world and safety precautions and sort of thing you've read on the news.
I'd encourage everybody to read that DOH document. It's painful because it repeats itself over and over again. But read it to get familiar with some of the things that they are specifically requiring and be ready to do the same with the New York State guidelines.
So as you read that, for my business, I've had to go through seven different versions of that for all the business units that we have. Pay close attention because others will, where it says required, where it says must, and where it says should. Because that's where we're gonna have the biggest concerns. When we say, when we elect to go something and it just says should and we don't have to, or vice versa, it'll be a tough situation.
It doesn't mean we can't, like if it says should, doesn't mean we can't say require, because we can force better safety protocols in place than may be suggested. But that will then guarantee the emails will flow once that's out there, because people, other people are reading this very closely.
It's all significance. Just in advance saying thank you for your hard work, because I know this is gonna be really hard, but I know you have a great team and it'll, it'll work out. Kathy Grubman did a great job when she's still on the California Superintendent. Did a good job of kind of laying out, you know, one solved problem just leads to another problem that you need to tackle, so.
That's a good way of describing.
Yeah.
Every racket and turn is. Take more questions. But right now, we're in good shape, but we're nowhere near being ready to go.
Yeah, no, so I find it hard to believe that there's over 700 districts in New York State, SEDs are within all of their plans and it looks up and down, who knows, right? I mean.
Well, their concept of the portal is to make the review easy. So it forces your response to a specific statement to be in here, so they can go through that and compare. So, yeah, it's.
So it's a minimum response thing. So what happened the last time, we got maybe two revisions we had to put in, because there wasn't enough detail about this or enough detail about that. Whatever we put in is only gonna be a shell. It'll be close to all of it, but we're gonna have to do it and protocols are gonna have to be placed. So we, you know, I'm not worried about the portal and the deadline. I'm more worried about what does it look like when we refine it to kind of the natural plan? So the actual putting three plans in, to be honest with you, to me is extra work. Because I'm not sure that one or two of them are even feasible. So, but it's, it's the mandate right now, it's the executive order.
So I'm assuming all the districts, both county, are, they're gonna do the same thing. So they'll obviously do something different than writing, or.
I don't think the districts will do the same things at all, just because.
Or really.
I'm gonna use the wrong word, but our makeup, our personalities are different. Take a school like Kendall, they can actually fit all the kids in just by using the space they have. And Wheaton, their, their average class sizes are already around fourteen or fifteen. So for them to meet the six foot requirement, for example, is a lot easier than Greece. And I think Penfield, the average around twenty-five foot for class. And that's elementary. So our elementary average is nineteen point two or something like that. So, so there's different variables for a school district. And so we'll look different, Dave, I, I think that the superintendents would like to be on the same page, because it's, it's that consistency, because everyone plays everyone against each other. Well, they're doing it here, they're not doing it here, but there's always different variables, there's always different things, so.
That's a good point, because I mean, Wheaton, Charlie is different than.
Being able to get kids in, the city's gonna struggle with RTS. And they're, they're already worried about hurting some of them because of that. There's just so many variables. So we're just gonna tap them every week, every day, I think. And we'll keep you updated. News and notes will become real important, but I'm pretty sure that we update in between, because that's gonna happen, that change every day.
Gary, I think you could support me on this one. The reopening task force so far has done an unbelievable job. We've had some great discussion in that group, and I feel very confident moving forward. And as we know, there's gonna be a lot of moving parts to this. There are tons of moving parts. After reading through that document that just came out and trying to configure in our minds, what it's gonna look like, what it's gonna feel like, that's gonna be the challenge of, you know, putting that all together to have a final product. So, but I think we're moving in a real positive direction. We still have a lot of work to do. And I'm very excited about tomorrow's meeting, you know, just to hit the ground running. So feeling good about this, even though it's gonna be new to everybody, so. Absolutely, you have to be. There's no other choice.
We got a lot of work to do.
And real quick, Ty, we have a meeting tomorrow night too, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the only other thing I wanted to add was I would urge everybody, if you get questions from the community, please refer them into a net, so that they're, the messaging that happens is coming through clear and.
Consistent.
Consistent.
Yeah, it's a good point, Gary. There's, you know, the guidance is already out there and there's people completely against the guidance. So and the regulations, the executive orders are everywhere at home. So and the Department of Health guidance is gonna be in alignment with the state executive order. They're not gonna go in an opposite direction. There's sometimes not going on the same page, but but there, we're gonna get that. So. Survey's going out soon, probably in the next few days, and then we're gonna, the committee will be driven by that. And what we know we have to do based on the guidance and the executive orders and the portal expectations by the third worst.
A lot of time?
No, no, no. I'm just, just for the record, first of all, the governor's done a lot of work on this. We're one of five states that didn't get guidance until the end of the day. There's every other state, I mean, I think it was five or six when we was filing one, correct, it was five? Didn't even have final guidance, so that's part of the problem. When you wait on that, and especially when they got people saying their guidance is useless, don't look at it anyhow, just kind of creates a big storm, so. We got this. So we got you in the committee, Dave.
That's right.
So, so advanced, thank you for everyone on those committees and sharing those committees. And we've got a heck of a job ahead of you, and thank you all for doing that. And Board members and admin.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's like twelve teachers and twelve administrators, ten parents or more, right? On the instructional side, there's forty-two. Operational side, there's three subcommittees. Operations is, I think, in the thirty, so. Not a representation.
Okay, any Board member reports, any other? Like conversation? And we would like to pass it forward to Mr. Kincaid, because I think we have a special guest online right now.
Super.
Let's make sure he's here, and can we see John? John, you need to turn on the camera, sir?
There he is.
He'll make us smaller.
It's like.
There you go. You know, I think he's unmuted himself.
Yeah. John, can you unmute yourself?
How about that?
Hey, perfect. John, you're considered highly effective with that.
Yeah, right.
There you go.
So. You can just imagine my Zoom classes, right?
There you go. So what we're gonna do here, John, is we've had, we have you here this evening for a really, really important and special announcement that I believe that you're already aware of. But we were talking about the high school band room dedication tonight, as you know. And before I read that resolution to make it official, I just want to recognize some key people that were a part of this process that came forward to nominate you for this. So some of the key people from the Spencerport Music Association are Mary Beth Strong, Jeanie Glouger, and also Beth Burr. So those are some of the key people that came forward with the nomination to dedicate the high school band room to you. So right now, I'm gonna read the resolution aloud. Whereas the Board of Education of the Spencerport Central School District wishes to acknowledge an extraordinary individual who contributed his time and effort in service of the Spencerport community. And whereas John Viabatney served twenty-two years as a music teacher and band director. And whereas Board of Education Policy Number 3170 naming school facilities allows for the naming of a facility for a person who has made a significant contribution to education in Spencerport. And whereas the administration staff and students of the Spencerport Central School District wanted to recognize the contributions of John Viabatney by naming the high school band room, the John Viabatney Band Room, in his honor. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Spencerport Central School District thanks Mr. John Viabatney for his many years of service and contributions to the Spencerport community. And be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the naming of the high school band room at the Spencerport High School, the John Viabatney Band Room, dated July 14th, 2020. Congratulations, John.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, I just want to thank you guys, of course, for this incredible honor. I want to thank the SMA for putting my name in the hat and the administration at the high school, the administration here at the, at the district level. Because without their support, I couldn't do all the things that I wanted to do with my kids and give them the opportunities that I did. But most importantly, I want to thank my students for their incredible talent and perseverance and excellence in pursuing not only music, but becoming great young adults as part of their process through the high school upon graduation and moving forward from there. So thank you again so very much. I so appreciate it. I'm very humbled.
Mr. O'Keefe?
John, I don't think you know how much people honor you and respect you, but worked together with you for a number of years at the high school there. But I, John came and I left like a couple of years right after that, and I went over to Canalview. But you know what? You've made a difference in so many kids' lives and your colleagues' lives over these years, and I can't say enough about how much we appreciate what you've done for our school district. You are definitely top notch, and you will be missed, but I understand you said you're coming back to substitute. Lied to me, Jamie.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you so much. Thank you all. I really appreciate it.
And also, just so you know, Mike Crum wanted to be here, um, attend the piece tonight, but he couldn't. But he sends his, you know, congratulations to you and well wishes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any other Board member comments?
So, John, one of the worst things about tonight is the fact that you're not here. And if you were here, we know you would have brought some of the best music in our districts. So that's, that's something that we're gonna miss tonight.
Thank you. I would have, I would have really done that, so we appreciate, I appreciate it. And hopefully, maybe in the fall, we can get together and in person and when times are better.
Well, congratulations and thank you for all that you've done, and we wish you a happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate you so much.
Well, we will be in touch with a future date on actual dedication ceremony.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for doing that. Appreciate it.
Excuse me?
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, my pleasure.
We gotta tweak our resolutions. Well, we thought it was over, and then another whereas.
And I didn't do one twice, I just repeat one, so. I saw a bike going like this too.
Okay, and we're out of schedule here. All the reports are done? All of the Board of Education reports are complete.
Okay, well, Rick emailed you today.
It was one.
Well, thank you to Greece for changing things a little bit for us. I spent, Rick did some updates on that for you that will allow him to talk about the tax levy, estimated tax rates. But he did give you an update. If you didn't get a chance to see that this afternoon, I apologize. But it was literally a eleven, and we got a call saying they changed them. I think we got to a three something. We have a few meetings today, and so you should have that document, but he's gonna go over that now. And if you can, if you, if you don't have the newest version, it's in your email, if you need to access the email.
Yeah, I guess maybe, has everyone seen it, done revisions? So we found the benefactor of the gates reassessment. We're not much larger.
You were.
Much larger than what he had shared. But the good news is, because we're conservative, rates are going down more so than what we had originally projected. They're actually going down for every single town. Again, I think I just want to highlight, based on the conversations we've had during our long range financial analysis, it was my impression that we really wanted to begin focusing and trying to maximize what the maximum level levy limit, which is what we're doing here, we're just a hair under that amount. In doing so, I'm recommending going to thirty-nine, two twenty-nine, three seventy-nine with the levy, and then the corresponding tax rates. Open it up, any questions you may have? Just real quickly too, because of the change from Greece, I have not received the tax warrant affidavit. As soon as I do that, I'll pull out all of those where, and then get signature for that's on the fourth for people coming individually inside. Any other questions?
Good job.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the tax levy and estimated tax rate for the 2020, 21 school year.
Thank you for the plethora of information that you provided over. All the stuff where they took it to that.
Year of honor.
And then I think Gary kind of referenced the five point two item earlier that the audit involved. Remember, we decided there were facilities management this year on the audit. You know, nice overview of that, remember we provided that. I have a feeling what I'm gonna hear right now with Rick.
Any questions?
I was not sure where this audit was gonna go, something we've not done before. I was pleasantly surprised by it, although there's not a lot of findings. I did hear you learn some things. But again, I would turn it over to Gary and Mike as part of the audit committee to see if they want to share anything else. But pretty clean, relatively clean audit, and the implementation to correct them is according to Nelson.
Yeah, I mean, the bulk of the discussion is a result of the audits around fuel use and how that's monitored. That was the bulk of the question and answer time, and all the answers were right there, very transparent. Well, a lot of that stuff wasn't in the report. The district's right on it. We're really monitoring how they, I think it's done right down to the nitty gritty of exactly how people get fuel and how it's recorded, accounted for, and the mechanism. So it was all well done. Didn't, like you said, I think there was a lot of talk about whether, what road we went down for this specific audit, and this is what we chose this time around. And brought some things to light, but a very clean audit. There's nothing, nothing that the board needs to be alarmed about or even to worry about at all.
So did the, we selected the facility audit. Did it look into the things that the committee thought they were gonna look into and cover things? Or is there something that we ought to? Or is there something that we ought to put on the radar for a future?
Well, I mean, it looked into overtime, looked into fuel issues, which is an easy area to have problems in and stuff like that. And so I did, I know, I'm trying to reach back in memory of when we actually formulated this one, but it didn't, it didn't miss anything that we thought were big items. Because really the overtime, the fuel usage and those kind of things, that we might actually see some concern with. But minus some procedural stuff with the fuel keys and things like that, it really wasn't. And the guys, guys doing the audit, they obviously had experience doing this kind of thing before because they were able to speak intelligent, very intelligently about some of the other things they've seen. And so we were, we were good to go.
Looked thorough after comments and responses.
So we got to hear and the bus. And remember, we still have both fuel agreements with the county and the town. So I think that was part of the audit, the accuracy of those reports and building that one.
Got it. Went after the big areas where there might be an ability for us to make some change operationally to save some money. And there really wasn't, as a result of the audit, became clear that things were being well organized and well managed. And it wasn't really that opportunity. There was no, certainly no fraud, but there was certainly, it wasn't nearly what I kind of, I didn't see what I thought it was going to be.
Very good.
Yeah, the motion to acknowledge the internal audit. Gary, second, Greg, all in favor? Okay, so meeting evaluation.
Two meetings in an hour?
Actually, so kind of with meeting evaluation is, or president's, we want to try to have a board development session before the end of this month. And. Mike was just asking if this needs to be recorded at this point, but yes, we're still public. So we'd like to try to set up something where we can kind of figure out where we are, where we've been and what we have to do. It's an educational session for us to learn more about the main point of our topics are going to be the reopening plan. So, so, so we can learn more about what the administration knows and share what we know. So, and what days were you hoping or aiming towards?
I think, from memory, I think we were able to zero on Wednesdays or Thursdays were better before, but our whole world was changed. I don't know what nights, Laurie typically six o'clock is, so.
It's offsite. Usually it's not here.
We got to talk about that stuff. And a minimum, at least we have it on our calendar and we can do it, but it's there if we have, you know, better information to talk about. Yeah, three professional development, whatever it means. So I, the first one I looked at was, I thought about the 29th of July, Wednesday night.
Wednesdays are really tough.
What about Tuesday, the 28th?
Can we push to the next week? And there's a reason why. It's because I think we have some meetings internally here that I'd like to see what the results of those meetings are and I'd like to hear that.
So if we push it out the following week, we will have already submitted our plan.
Wait a minute, no.
That's true too.
Oh, yours, I'm on vacation now.
Go ahead.
The first week in August?
I have nothing on 28.
28, a month, 28?
Yeah.
28 going twice?
Six o'clock.
7:00, tentatively 6:00.
Yeah. Where and how we do it. All right.
Yep.
I think some of our previous locations will not work.
No. Need to be on someone's patio or.
So Tuesday, July 28th.
Somewhere, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to everyone and iron out the location. Agree with, unless we got volunteers right now, it's a patio, my porch.
Any one of us can go.
And I do think when you approve in the board meetings that you're for 6:00, that's more than a lot of districts are doing. So that was a part of your consent agenda. I think you had.
Okay, so meeting evaluation, I think it went well for our first in-person meeting in several months. Laurie, how it felt for your first one?
I think it went okay.
Yeah.
Are we expected to transition back to the Zoom meeting until?
No.
Well, did you mean for after executive tonight or for our next?
Next board meeting.
No, I mean, the next meeting, will the meetings continue to be? This was a special meeting because we were supposed to sign tax documents today. But then, so with that not happening, we set the meeting schedule to go live. In the future, are we going to go back to the Zoom format? Are we going to go live as well as far as when the state permits that to?
We'll reach out and figure out whether we want to do that last one that we can do, Zoom via Zoom or come in. But this may become the new norm because even though public, there's, we may not be able to fit enough people in the room or have that option. Okay, so we will be going into executive session and we do have to come back in this room after executive session to close out. So you're going to put it.
I think we're actually going to stay here.
We're staying here because we can't social distance.
Oh, yeah. Okay. But we're just going to dismiss our attendees and the recorded part of the meeting.
Yeah, we don't want to broadcast this.
Never know.
Everything implies we are recording.
Greg, can you say that again, when we came out?
We came out of executive session at 8:35 and now we need a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Who was actually the second? Before we go on the second, because Marcy needs to.
Yeah, Marcy's going to want to go.
Mike?
Yeah, Mike.
Mike.
Oh, Randall. The Randall family, they're moving here right there.
Okay.
Congratulations for you.